We didn't come to order.
Eric Chen.
We didn't come to order. Call the roll.
Mayor Manning?
President.
Councilman Patricelli?
President.
Councilman McGroudy?
President.
Clerk please read your comments from our last meeting.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to have we dispensed in the minutes of the previous meeting.
My second, Ed.
Second as is. Call the roll.
Councilman Patricelli?
In favor.
Councilman McGroudy?
In favor.
Mayor Manning?
In favor. Port your motions committees.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we will begin with the first department review from 2018. We begin with the fire department, but because of the resignation and retirement of Chief Conlin and the newly appointed chief, Chief Tom Garrett, who is here tonight for the first time at a council meeting, so welcome Chief Garrett. I'll be providing the report, 2018 report, and again, this is an operational report, just the operations of each department. And the first one, again, is for the fire department. Had a really exciting PowerPoint presentation for you, but some technical difficulties, so please bear with me. Sorry, there won't be any visuals for this. First, the fire department is a full-time, full-service department. It is not volunteer in any way, and they operate 24 hours a day. Water Fleet Fire Department is an ALS transport department, which is Advanced Life Service. So there's three different types of life support that you can offer. It can be BLS, which is basic life, ALS, advanced life, and then advanced life with transport, which is what the City of Water Fleet is, because we have ambulance that transports to the hospitals. Members of the department are assigned to four separate platoons. Each platoon works a 24-hour shift from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m., and each platoon works one day on and three days off. So the first portion of it I want to talk about is staffing. So there's 24 total members in the fire department and one chief. Again, there's four platoons. On each platoon, there's a captain assigned, a lieutenant, and four firefighters. Two of those members are assigned to the ambulance each day. In February of 2018, Captain Mazarello, John Mazarello, retired from the department. Subsequently, about 30 days later, Lieutenant Franzak was promoted to captain, and firefighter Jim Strach was promoted to lieutenant. Anthony Halpin was then hired on March 27th, and he completed the academy and graduated on July 3rd. So the department was short-staffed from February 25th until July 3rd. And we're not getting into any of the finances of it, but when Mike McNeff does his presentation in April on the finances, it'll also show that even with being down a member, the fire department was able to come in under budget for their overtime, which is obviously a positive thing for us. Call volume, that's the biggest thing that we definitely want to discuss tonight. The fire department received 2,509 calls in 2018. That's a 7.5% increase over 2017, and is the most calls in the history of the fire department. So we kind of break it down into four specific types of calls. The first is fire calls. There were 53 fire calls, which is a 6% increase from 17 to 18. Out of those fires, 27 of those fires were building fires, four of those were vehicle fires, three were overpressure or rupture fires, and then 19 other types of fire. EMS calls is where the majority of the calls came in for the department. There's 1,807 EMS calls. That's a 10% increase from 2017 to 2018 again. 1,014 of those were BLS transports, so basic life, and then 320 of those were advanced life transports. False alarms, this is an interesting one. This is the one category that actually went down. There was 153 false alarm calls in 2017, and again, that went down. That's a 20% reduction, and there's a reason for that. Chief Spain had proposed to the council, and the council approved, a false alarm legislation that fines those for continual false alarms. So that's mostly the reason for the reduction in that area. And then they had 493 other calls, and these can be for a majority of different things. That's a 9% increase. So other than the false alarms, all of the calls have increased from 2017 to 2018, and again, it was the busiest year for the fire department calls-wise. Major incidents. July 3rd was a very busy day for the fire department, and I will read directly from Chief Conlin's reports on these. First, the department was dispatched at 5:53 p.m. to respond for a mutual aid structure fire at 41 Euclid Avenue, which is Kelman Scrapyard in Cohoes. Being dispatched to this location is fairly regular, a call that's received, and through the normal course of business, heavy smoke is reported at the scrapyard because of the tasks that are taken there. On this specific day, the Cohoes Fire Department found a large body of fire and a pile of metal scrap that was impinging on the building, a large power line, and several propane cylinders. The fire quickly involved the building and resulted in several large explosions. Water Fleet units worked at this location until 10:55, when the second major incident of the day took place. At 10:55 on July 3rd, all Water Fleet fire units responded to in front of 711 19th Street for a motor vehicle rollover accident with a car on fire and people trapped inside. Upon arrival, the units were confronted with a car heavily involved fire, which was beginning to involve Conroy's bait shop. The fire was extinguished and prevented from spreading to the bait shop. Due to heavy volume of fire and damage to the vehicle, the trapped victim was unable to be extracted, and the subsequent autopsy showed the driver was killed on impact due to internal injuries related to the crash at the high rate of speed. So a very busy day for the department that day, but there were two major incidents on that. There was a third major incident that the department responded to. Again, this was mutual aid on September 30th, 2018. In the early morning hours, mutual aid partners to the south in the City of Albany had a very busy night for the fire department. The AFD had already been fighting a major fire that involved six attacks multiple-unit apartment buildings when they were dispatched to 176 Quail Street for a reported structure fire. Upon arrival, the first unit found a six-attack, multiple-unit apartment buildings heavily involved in fire. Mutual aid was dispatched, including the Water Fleet Fire Department to Quail Street. The Water Fleet Fire Department ladder truck was on scene for about five and a half hours, putting water on the major structure fire. So those were the major incidents that took place in 2018. The next topic I'd like to discuss is training. Three specific areas of training that took place in 2018, which are above and beyond the usual training for the fire department. Annual arson training. We have three members of the fire department that are certified arson investigators. All three continued their training in 2018 and plan to do so for 2019. There was AAIR training, which is really active shooter training. In the spring, the department started doing active shooter training. This training is in response to the current trends related to active shooter, active killing events throughout the country. The fire department took part in several two-day sessions in the arsenal that prepared both the fire department and the police department personnel to respond and work together to respond and provide care for victims of active shooter-type events. This training took place from May through August and covered all members of the department. Class was two days long, with all members taking part. After this training and moving forward, the plan is to continue with the cooperation and team effort put forth by the fire department and the police department to provide the best possible response in the event of one of these tragic incidents. This is very proactive, of course, being prepared for this, and it's a training that puts us at top level for training, but something that we hope that we never have to use. And the third type of training is called TECC, which is Tactical Emergency Casualty Care. And this was completed by the city's EMS coordinator, which is Tom Corcoran. TECC is an advanced course of EMS training that enhances current EMS training to be better trained and more prepared for an active shooter, active killer-type event. This training is derived from training combat medics received in the military. The plan moving forward is to send eight of our medics to this course in the coming year, and the council did approve that with the budget to continue with these trainings. So moving forward into 2019, what is next? Of course, as I mentioned, new chief Tom Garrett. If the trend continues, we do expect that there will continue to be an increase in call volume. We will continue, as mentioned, with the further training, and right now, at this point, we are full-staffed, and we have no reason to believe that we will be below the proper staffing level for the fire department. So again, this is a 2018 review of operations for the fire department. And if there's any questions from up here?
The financial will be with Mike.
Yep, all finances will be with Mike once the year is fully closed out.
The, I know you addressed the overtime, and I know, like, I see the overtime reports. I know you're under the amount of overtime, but it's still pretty significant. Is there anything that has, that can be done about that now that we have, we're fully staffed, right? Do we expect it to be decreased a little?
Oh, it all depends on call volume, really. If there's mutual aid calls, if there's recalls for fire, that has a lot to do with it. Basic, the basic overtime for men being off and coverage for it is pretty equivalent each year, but it really is determined by injured on duty and recall, call line. Those are the two main things that drive it. Probably shouldn't talk much about the fire department's injured on duty last year, just not for the change for 2019, but it worked out very good, and I think the recalls, as was mentioned, was a little bit lower in volume than what we usually have. Those two factors together kept the department under pressure.
I'm okay. Can I ask you a question? Call the roll. I was just wondering, how many EMS calls were outside the city?
I don't have that statistic in front of me, but I can get it, and I can have it at the next meeting or try and get it to you before that.
Because that creates a lot of overtime.
EMS calls outside of the city?
Yeah.
Well, EMS call outside of the city doesn't specifically cause overtime. EMS call doesn't cause overtime unless there's multiple EMS calls and recalls needed.
So if they got an EMS call and they had to go to the hospital, it doesn't create overtime?
Not automatically.
Not unless there was another call that came in subsequent to that, right?
Correct.
Good.
All I have for time, correct?
Let's go to old business, Scott.
We have nothing in old business.
New business?
New business. We have the first reading of ordinance number 1994, an ordinance of the City of Water Fleet providing that the code of the City of Water Fleet, Chapter 260, Vehicle and Traffic, Article 4, Handicap Parking, Section 260-30, access points be amended.
Motion to accept. Ordnance number 1994 as written.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Yes, so this is a little different than our traditional handicap parking request. This is for a gentleman that was on the 2300 block of 8th Avenue, and through conversations with both he and his daughter, we decided that he didn't need a full-fledged handicap parking spot, which takes up 18 feet on the block. Rather, he was just looking for a handicap access point. What the access point is, is an area of sidewalk that comes perpendicular to the road, and we put a sign on each side of that sidewalk, and it prevents somebody from parking in that general area, about a four-foot spot, and he gets access to the road and can get into his vehicle. Instead of the full 18-foot spot, he felt that this was probably suitable for his condition that he suffers from right now, and the daughter agreed. So this is the first time I've had to draft an ordinance on this specific request, but I think it's more suitable for this individual, and it actually helps everybody else that's on that block as well.
We have others, though.
We do, but they were prior to.
Right.
So there's going to be two signs?
One on each side.
Okay, so is there any objection that we just, in the whereas of the first paragraph, just take out the A and handicap access point signs to be erected in front of the residents? Make it plural. Everybody okay with that?
I'm fine.
Okay, thank you. So we'll call it off with that change.
Councilman Patricelli?
In favor.
Councilman McGroudy?
In favor.
Mayor Manning?
In favor.
Next, we have the first reading of ordinance number 1995, an ordinance of the City of Water Fleet providing that the code of the City of Water Fleet, Chapter 260, Vehicle and Traffic, Article 4, Handicap Parking, Section 260-30C, sign locations be amended.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to have we move on this ordinance.
My second, Ed. Discussion on this one?
Yes, so this is our traditional handicap parking spots in front of two addresses, one on 813 Broadway, the other in front of 1522 Sixth Avenue. This is the traditional 18 feet of property space that's blocked out in the roadway to conform with the handicap parking signs that are placed there and to provide specialized parking for the residents in that area.
Comments, questions? Call the roll, Scott.
Councilman Patricelli?
In favor.
Councilman McGroudy?
In favor.
Mayor Manning?
In favor.
Next, we have ordinance, first reading of ordinance number 1996, an ordinance of the City of Water Fleet providing that the code of the City of Water Fleet, Chapter 175, Housing Standards of the Code of the City of Water Fleet, be amended.
I'd like to make a motion to accept ordinance number 1996 as written.
I'll second it.
Discussion?
Yes, so as indicated by our clerk, this is an ordinance to amend Section 17552, which is the property maintenance section of the code under Chapter 175 Housing Standards, to add a new subsection. One of our code enforcement officers, the building inspector, Mr. Labossiere, approached me and indicated, you know, would it be possible to move language from one section or keep language in a section, but move it to another section for enforcement purposes? And that's what we're doing here. We're adding a new subsection F to the open areas section of the property maintenance requirements for junk or unregistered motor vehicles. Equipment and materials should not be stored in open areas of premises. So it would be added that language to Section 1752, and it'd be subsection F. Thank you.
So the reason to, is we already have that, but it's in another section that wasn't able to be enforced, is that what you're saying? Or not as easy or?
Yeah, I believe that it's part of another section of our code, but for the purposes of residential areas, I believe, and open areas for property maintenance, he wanted to be included in that area. Here, in that section of 17252, it was not in that section. So yes, he wanted that to be added.
Good.
Councilman Patricelli?
In favor.
Councilman McGroudy?
In favor.
Mayor Manning?
In favor.
Next, we have resolution number 9583. Council of the City of Water Fleet hereby authorizes Mayor Michael P. Manning to execute an application on behalf of the City of Water Fleet with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation for the New York State Drinking Water Source Protection Program.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to have we move on this resolution.
My second, Ed. Discussion?
Yes, Mayor, this is part of reservoir maintenance grants that are coming out from New York State DEC. This is known as the DWSP2, which is Drinking Water Source Protection Program. This is, this grant is for 30 municipalities throughout New York State to receive funds to put together a source water protection plan, which in our case will help to update the watershed management plan and rules and regulations that we have for the reservoir out in Gildones. There's no match specifically with this, with this grant, because again, it's to put together a plan, and all 30 municipalities will be working together. One of the main things that it strives to do is help with enforcement. There's always difficulties in enforcement with a reservoir because of where they're usually located. They're usually outside of the city or town limits, and they usually cross over multiple boundaries. So for instance, where our reservoir is within three counties and 15 municipalities, so sometimes it becomes a little bit more difficult to enforce the rules and regulations. So this will help us to be able to put rules and regulations together that are much more easily enforceable and give a little bit more weight to the enforcement. Again, no match on this. This is just to put together the plan and follow through with it, and it's the first of its kind that DEC has done, so we would be on the ground floor with this if we receive this grant.
Sound required? Call the roll.
Councilman Patricelli?
In favor.
Councilman McGroudy?
In favor.
Mayor Manning?
In favor.
Next, we have resolution number 9584. The Council of the City of Water Fleet hereby authorizes Mayor Michael P. Manning to execute an application on behalf of the City of Water Fleet with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation and to accept and receive grants for the implementation of a project related to invasive species control and eradication program.
I'd like to make a motion to accept resolution number 9584 as written.
I'll second.
Discussion?
So this is the second grant that DEC is offering for reservoir maintenance. As we've talked about before, we have a study that is being completed or has been completed to look at invasive species out of the, at the reservoir in Gildones, and with that report, we'll be putting together a management plan. This grant allows us to go after $100,000 of resources to eradicate any invasive species out at the reservoir. Looks like, based on the preliminary draft that I've seen of the report that we have, it looks at about a five-year, about $75,000 each year to eradicate or begin the eradication of any invasive species out in the reservoir. This grant would be $100,000 towards that, so we can move a little bit faster, or we can use it to offset some of the costs that we have, whichever way we decide to do it. So once again, this is, this is to do some work at the reservoir for reservoir maintenance, and one of the things that we really like to do when we're going for grants is if we have known expenses for the future, to go for the grants to reduce those expenses rather than create more expenses. This will reduce expenses that we've already identified as we move forward. So I recommend this to the council that we apply to this grant. This one is much more competitive and much more high-end when it comes to what it's for, so it's very competitive, a little bit of a lower chance of receiving this grant, but we're going at it very aggressively.
Call the roll.
Councilman Patricelli?
In favor.
Councilman McGroudy?
In favor.
Mayor Manning?
In favor.
Next, we have resolution number 9585. The Council of the City of Water Fleet hereby authorizes in direct Scott P. O'Reilly, City Clerk, Clerk to the Council, to advertise in the official newspaper of the city that a public hearing will be held in the J. Leo O'Brien Senior Center, Water Fleet, New York, on February, on Thursday, February 21st, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. for the purpose of hearing those persons who wish to be heard regarding proposed local law number two for the year 2019, a local law to amend Chapter 245 trees of the Code of the City of Water Fleet.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to have we move on this resolution.
My second, Ed. Discussion?
So this is updating the tree law. We had a previous public hearing, and the local law was removed to be re-proposed. This proposal is to change the fee, which currently states $50 per tree for the permit, changes that language to say $50 per permit. And again, this is the publication for a public hearing at the next meeting.
Just the announcement?
Yep.
Okay. Call the roll.
Councilman Patricelli?
In favor.
Councilman McGroudy?
In favor.
Mayor Manning?
In favor.
Next, we have resolution number 9586. The Council of the City of Water Fleet hereby authorizes in direct Scott P. O'Reilly, City Clerk, Clerk to the Council, to advertise once in the official newspaper of the city that a public information meeting will be held on Monday, February 25th, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. in the Water Fleet Senior Citizen Center, 1501 Broadway in Water Fleet, New York, for the purpose of gaining public input, ideas, and comments on the Mohawk Hudson Bike Hike Trail Connection Project.
Motion to accept resolution number 9586.
I'll second it.
Discussion?
So this is to publish for a public information meeting on the proposed bike path connection from 4th Street to 23rd Street. Originally, a few years back, we applied through the Capital District Transportation Committee through the Transportation Improvement Program, and we received it, received a grant in the amount of $500,000 to connect the 4th Street Tunnel to 23rd Street to bridge the gap of the bike path of the Mohawk Hudson Bike Hike Trail, which has been identified as one of the more dangerous sections of the trail. We have procured Barton and Le Judice as our consulting engineers, and when we procured them, we spoke to them about trying to see if they could make the original scope of the project even safer than what was proposed. Barton and Le Judice was able to do that, but there was a further cost for that. I'm happy to say that today, we were able to secure the remainder of the funding, which was $820,000, which moves this project to 1.3 million. The Capital District Transportation Committee met today, we presented our case, and we were approved for the additional funding. So this will allow for, rather than having shared roadways with cyclists, the cyclist will ride only on the east side of Broadway from 4th Street all the way to 23rd Street. So on Monday, February 25th, Barton and Le Judice will be here to present this plan and discuss it and answer any questions that the public might have. Longtime project that's been talked about, part of the Bicycle Master Plan, got a lot of information on this. We're able to advance this, so the proposed construction of this is this construction season. So anybody that's interested, we hope to see you on February 25th.
Okay. Call the roll, Scott.
Councilman Patricelli?
In favor.
Councilman McGroudy?
In favor.
Mayor Manning?
In favor.
Mr. Mayor, to the best of my knowledge, it's all we have in new business.
Thank you. Appropriations and accounting?
We do have ones. Appropriations and accounting, we have resolution number 9587. Council of the City of Water Fleet hereby authorizes the increase of funds of certain expenditure counts and certain revenue accounts in the annual estimate that has become necessary due to unforeseen circumstances.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to have we move on this resolution.
My second, Ed. Discussion?
This is our annual transfers that we do year-end as we move into February and year-end closeout. Again, for underspent items and overspent, these moves are budget-neutral and do not affect the bottom line. If there's any other questions, I'm sure I can answer them, but the list of transfers has been distributed to the council for consideration.
Questions, comments for Mike? Okay, Scott, call the roll.
Councilman Patricelli?
In favor.
Councilman McGroudy?
In favor.
Mayor Manning?
In favor.
And Mr. Mayor, that's all we have in appropriations and accounting.
Great.
Mayor, if I could just make one statement, just to expand on the answer to your question regarding the ordinance of adding the junk or registered motor vehicles. If you asked, where was it in the section of the code? It was in the vacant, the maintenance of vacant building section of the code, so it's going to remain there, but then go under the property maintenance for residential premises, which would include occupant premises.
Right.
Okay, so I don't think I specifically said that, but yeah, okay? Thank you.
Anything else up here before we go to public commentary? Scott, roll it.
This time, the council has authorized the public comment period. If you wish to address the council, you must step forward, state your name and address for the record, and you will have two minutes to address the council on any matters you wish. At the end of your comment, the council may reply or choose to reply at a later date if they so choose.
Before anybody goes off, I will say I've already met with Mr. Yubon before he went on vacation, so he's already expressed all of his concerns to me, and they were all addressed to the general man. I told him I would make that statement, so.
No doubt there is.
I'm here just to make sure you said that.
Okay. Downhill after this, but does anyone else want to speak tonight?
So key charge rate, 1856, 1850, Water Fleet, New York, 12189. In the City of Water Fleet, I flip homes, I buy and I sell them. 90% of the properties that I buy are bought from the banks. They are vacant. In one particular property, this happened on every set of the one, but this one particular property, I bought it in July of last year. I obtained a building permit for the demo in October. I obtained a work permit in December. Today, we are ready to list the house for sale and have a buyer looking to close by March 15th. City of Water Fleet have registered that house on a vacant property list with a $1,525 fee lagged against my taxes. In 2019, if I sell this house on March 15th, I think it's not fair to pay that $1,525 In the 2019, if I sell this house on March 15, I think it's not fair to pay that $1,500 for the whole year when I sold the house within three months of this year. Second part of this is every single house that City considers vacant, they are charging for the water bill and the sewer, even if there's nobody living in it. And numerous times, the water has been disconnected at the street, but the buyer gets stuck with this, and they said there's nothing can be done. Those are my two concerns are one, vacant fee. Many of you know that home that I done in Water Belie, it cost me almost $10,000 in vacant home fees. And at the other end, I'm turning around the abandoned homes that was ISOs for years and years, but at the other end, I'm still paying $2,000, building permits, all the other stuff. And, you know, that's, if anybody can trust that.
I don't know if you can press it specifically.
But, no, no.
Without looking into it, but the intent of the big building law that we passed was to get, get them moving, and it shouldn't be a disincentive.
Men, there's properties that I've turned around in two to three months, and I paid for the whole year. Last week, I had property on 23rd Street. We bought it in July. Building Department did a CO inspection in August. People moved in, and we still have to pay this year's vacant building fee because it's re-levied already. I went to the City Building Department, sent it to General Manager. I went there, didn't hurt anything, so I had to go pay the taxes, and now I pay it.
So the re-levying isn't...
Because the City considered the building as vacant, but there's people living in it.
It's not done during your ownership period?
Uh, well, it's 50/50, because they did it for the whole year of 2018. 2018, when I purchased it in July, the bank never paid it.
Okay.
On the other property, the one that I just said, first one, 513, 14th Street, four years of vacant property is paid by the bank, but it was just sitting there. But it's no longer sitting there, but I got a building permit, which is, you know, four months, so it's already ready to go, but if I close on March 15, why should I pay for the whole year fee on it and pay the water bill, which I'm not using?
Yeah, yeah. Well, they might not be your fee. We'll, we'll do an audit of that to get back to you.
My question.
But re-levies are almost two years old by the time you get them, so it could have happened a year before you bought.
The, my new taxes, that 2019 taxes do show that $3,300 amount, so today when I got it printed out, it says two water bills and $1,525 fee is added into it. But I'm trying to, you know, City's looking better, you know, and I'm also paying $2,000 to make the city look better.
Again, the intent of that law, when we drafted it and passed it, was not to disincentive, make it disincentive to get them moving. We just didn't want them sitting there vacant and empty, so you're, you're doing...
I'm doing what the City wants me to do, but I'm paying the City also to do the same thing.
Exactly.
And I'm paying for something that I'm not getting.
All right, well, let us, let us audit how that's being...
Water bill is one issue, and the vacant fee is the other issue.
It's really the timeline, right? It's a timeline issue.
It could be.
It could be.
We'll make sure and...
If it's something, originally, we was told that if you rent, or you occupy the property within six months, you get it back.
Right.
But apparently that, I don't know, last time they said, if you own or occupy it, then they give you back. If I sell it, you don't get it back. I don't understand the difference.
I think the issue with that is, the only way for you to get the money back is if you paid it. So it was due January of 2018, it was never paid, so it got re-levied under the taxes for 19. If it was originally paid in January and you got the, the house up in, in July, then it would have been reimbursed.
But if it is re-levied, I'm still paying for the re-levied from the county, regardless, who do I pay to?
But it had nothing to do with you, when you owned it, that's what you're saying.
But...
Let us take, we'll audit it.
Yep.
And then we'll look at the, the words in the law.
Yep.
Because the intent was, unless you're even going to read the law to us right now...
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I have it.
Go ahead.
No, I mean, I have it right here, but I mean, we could discuss it.
Does it, can you answer this question by reading it?
Yeah, sure. I mean, it says, "The fee shall be paid in full prior to the issuance of any building permit, with the exception of a demolition permit. The fee shall be returned to the owner if within, if within one year from the date that it was paid, the building is no longer vacant, and the building department completes all required inspections, and the appropriate permits or certificates are issued by the building department."
So regarding to this, I can go back and get all the, all the vacant fees that I paid for the last two years, I can come and claim those back?
I don't know, I'd have to take a look at it.
This is, this is what originally I was told. Last time when I went there, after one particular house, they said, no, because you sold it, you cannot get it back.
Well, let's take a look at it.
I mean, I'm allowed to do that, I'll come back and find the money.
If there's one party they read, you only have like 24 hours to claim the money, so... Now, we'll get a full report, too.
Thank you.
And make sure it's being applied evenly, too.
Yeah, some of these, for three months, I've been $1,500, but originally, they did say you will get it back.
If you didn't pay it, or no one did...
No one paid it, then nobody's claiming it.
Then there's nothing to get back, but let's look into it.
If the house has been sold or haven't been rented, you know, somebody has paid it.
The intent of the law is to get them fixed up, people in them.
Right, yeah.
And you get your money back if you do that, so...
Absolutely.
Sounds like you're entitled, but...
I'll get them this weekend. Thanks.
Okay. Anybody else?
Walter Klinkner, 1809, 10th Avenue, Water Belie. I was on the S. Scott. Has there been any plans made yet for resurfacing roads in Water Belie, specifically 9th Avenue, 19th Street to 16th Street, or 18th Street from Sixth Avenue to 9th Avenue? I know that's been talked over the last two years, and I was hoping maybe this year it would be completed, or...
Yes, I'll answer that. We haven't determined any roads yet this year, but one of the, the big things is with, with CHIPS money, you have to be able to provide ADA-compliant sidewalks with it, so it poses an issue with 18th Street right now, because there's no sidewalks. So how could they be ADA if there aren't any? So I'm working with DOT right now to determine what happens on a street that doesn't have sidewalks. They give money to towns and villages as well, a lot of towns and villages don't have sidewalks, so trying to determine right now with them if we can, if we can do it on that street, or if it would require us to have to install sidewalks on the entire street to make them ADA compliant. Usually when we do it, we only have to do the curb ramps on the corners and then the intersections, rather than the full sidewalks, so that's what we're trying to, to find out right now and get confirmation from DOT, but 9th Avenue and 18th Street are two of the, the top streets on the list to be repaved, so...
Would that include curbs on the 9th Avenue possibly? You need the sidewalks where the curbs are all missing?
It does not include curbing when we do, when we do CHIPS. Only, only the curbs on the intersections for, for ADA compliance.
Okay, thank you. We'll be looking forward to seeing you in 9th Avenue soon. I'll be standing down in front.
Jeff Foster, 1201, 8th Avenue, Water Belie. I have a question about the building permits. When you apply for a building permit, lots of times when I come down and I apply for a building permit, or I'm rehabbing a house, it's nice to have my dumping trailer outside the house, and I was wondering if we could somehow implement where, when you apply for a rehab permit or a demo permit, if there's any way I could be allowed to have my dumping trailer outside the house with, without having it attached to a car and having to keep moving. Just doesn't make sense to move it every day if I'm going to be using it and then taking it to the dump each time.
So that would be in lieu of a dumpster? Do you use the trailer instead of...
Well, usually, the first step, what I do is I usually get a dumpster, and then my second step, you know, instead of using the dumpster every time, I use a dumping trailer. Some of the times I can get them on the sides of houses, and some of the times I can't. Where if I can't, when I apply for the permit, is there any way the permit that's in the window could say, can have dump trailer in front of house, you know, while I'm, while I'm rehabbing the house? Just because it just makes it a lot easier, rather than moving it every single day and coming back, it just, it makes life, you know, a lot easier to have that, rather than have the dumpster there.
It's an interesting idea, we'll definitely have to talk about that.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have the power of the building department to do that?
Yeah. See if it has to be placed in a code somewhere, or, you know, with some permits, or...
What's, what would be the difference between the trailer and dumpster?
Dumpster's a separate permit.
Yeah, right now, there's a, there's a barricade permit, dumpster permit for 50 bucks, is that what it is? Yeah. That'd be customized.
That's about a dumpster.
Dumpster. I understand that.
But the trailer's on, like, you have to move it out every night.
No, I understand that, but when you get a dumpster permit, it's, it's, that's what we're talking about.
$50 for seven days.
Right.
And the dumpster size needs from 10 feet to 30 feet, stays on the street for seven days, compared to a small 6 and 10 foot trailer.
So you're looking for some language that would have a trailer that would be used for the purposes of...
Yeah, like when you apply for the permit, if there's a box here, you're going to have a trailer on site, you can check the box, and you can put it in the window, and I might move my trailer every day, I might bring it to the dump and then bring it back, and you leave it there, but to be able to have to bring it back and forth every day, it's just, it's just hard. Like, right now, I'm doing it where it's on the side of the house, and I'm able to do it, but sometimes it's not the case, and I have to have it in front of the house. So I didn't know if it, you know, you just, if you wanted a permit, or you asked for a permit, you could say, all right, trailer, part of the thing for the trailer. It's no different to these contractors, a lot of these contractors that are doing a lot of the grant work, that have trailers, they put the trailer in front of the house, and they have all their stuff locked in it. With this new law, now they have to pull the trailer away every day, and then come back. Or a lot of the times, you just want to lock it up in, in the trailer and leave the trailer there. When they did, my mother-in-law was there every day, until the job was done, and then when the job was done, we put the trailer away.
The issue comes with that is, when you take it out at night, and the next day, somebody takes that parking spot, now you park down the block, and you gotta take garbage cans, pull up to that.
Well, we'll get with the building inspector, we'll take a look at it, see what we can, is there something that could be changed in there?
Thank you.
Good luck. Anyone else tonight?
Addition to my first part for the vacant building fee, is a vacant building water bill, or that can be dressed along with that. And I'm not taking trouble with that water bill.
Give, give open water and vacant buildings.
You missed all those public hearings, Keane. We went through a lot of that stuff. Check out the minutes. A lot of information.
Okay. I'm going to close the public commentary, then entertain a motion of general...
Yes.
Entertain a motion. Go to executive session.
Yes, I'm requesting that the council adjourn to executive session to discuss two confidential staff matters. I request that City Clerk Scott O'Reilly, Corporation Counsel Yorin Uvah, as well as Chief Spain and Chief Garrett, be present during the executive session.
Okay. There's a motion to go to executive session.
Yes, I am.
There's a motion to go to executive session.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to go on the adjournment.
We have a second. Councilman McGroudy?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
We adjourn to executive session. Take five minutes.